To the greatest extent possible. Specific information and general guidelines for remote participation can be found on the town's website at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash town hyphen administrator slash pages slash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen and/or watch the meeting either online via the town's on-demand video broadcast or on cable television on channel 191, or dial into the meeting at 774-304-1455. Enter 1428 pound for the meeting number and 12345 for the access code. This phone number is only active for the public during public meetings. No in-person attendance of members or the public will be permitted, but every effort will be made to ensure that the public can adequately access the proceedings in real time via technological means. In the event we are unable to do so despite best efforts, we will post audio and/or video recordings, transcript, or other comprehensive record of the proceedings on the town's website as soon as possible after the meeting. All set?
All set?
All set.
Okay, do we have our 6:35 party present?
You do.
Yeah.
And you have a public hearing notice. Would you like me to read the notice, Michael?
Yeah, sure, because I don't have that in front of me.
All right, and while I'm doing that, I'm going to share the screen with Janay, and she'll put the plan up for Mr. Jalbert.
Excuse me, did we read the agenda?
Oh, no, we did not, Marge. Thank you. Michael, do you want to read the agenda, and then I'll read the legal notice?
Sure. At 6:35, we have a public hearing for a special permit at 108 South Shore Drive. Howard and Michelle Sir request to construct a new single-story 24 by 26 detached garage within the side setback requirement. Followed by 6:50 PM, we have a public hearing for a special permit for 103 Shore Road. Lisa Carter and Alfred Trafonie request to construct a 5-foot by 11.5-foot deck to the home, which will result in an increase in percentage of lot coverage. And that's the agenda this evening.
All right. So if you want to open the public hearing, I'll read the public hearing notice. In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the center office building located at 301 Main Street on Wednesday, July 15, 2020, at 6:35 PM on the application of Howard and Michelle Sir. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05, and Chapter 24, Section 24.09, sub-paragraphs A through E of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structure or use for the property located at 108 South Shore Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a new single-story 24-foot by 26-foot detached garage within the side setback requirements. The zoning board may elect, consistent with Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case details respecting the same will be made public by the zoning board of appeals in advance of the hearing and will be posted here. HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash town hyphen administrator slash pages slash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The proposed request can be viewed at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge, excuse me, WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash zoning hyphen board hyphen appeals slash pages slash recent hyphen filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at J Lacy at Sturbridge dot gov. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals. All right. Is Michael here? Okay, Lenny, the-
Are we ready to proceed?
Yeah, you're all set. We have the plan up on the screen, Lenny. If you want to describe the plan to the board, explain what you're looking for.
Okay, what we're actually doing here is we're constructing a single-story, which is 24 by 26, two-stall garage, which is actually being part of taking a place that just across the driveway from that is a tent area, which he's been using as a garage, which he's gone to remove that. That tent area is above his existing leach field that's there, and in the driveway itself is a septic tank, which purportedly is located, as shown on the plan, which would be within a small portion of the proposed garage. If that is the case, once we start digging this, we would have to go to the border health for permission to remove the tank and actually shift the tank 90 degrees to miss the garage and leave the field and everything as is. So that's about as tight as we can go. What we're trying to do here is to set the garage that gives us enough room that the existing garage, which is on the opposite side of the driveway, that the car will be able to back out of that and turn and get onto South Shore Road. And that's the reason that we stayed roughly around 20 feet from the proposed garage to the existing garage. The setback that is 7.85 feet on the northerly side of the garage to the property line is almost double what it is on the south side, which is around 4.28. So the garage itself would be roughly 31 feet from the street, whereas the setback, the street setback is 30. So it's beyond the street setback, and the encroachment on the sideline is basically typical to the neighborhood. It's on a dead-end street, and just northerly of this was the only two house lots on that side. So it has basically negative impact, or no impact from the area per se where it's conforming to everyone else in the area, and that's why we put it there. To try to put the garage in any other place other than as shown is basically impossible. We don't have, we can't get by the building itself, and then going to the westerly side of that, it's the lake, it's a very steep slope, it'd be impossible to make construction at that particular area. So that's why we've set the garage where it is shown. Any questions, I'll be glad to answer them.
I have a question, Gene.
Oh, Marge, I'm sorry. Go right ahead.
Mr. Jalbert, you said that that was a tent that you have marked on the plan. However, according to your assessors' record, it's a framed shed of 288 square feet, and then the framed garage, the effective area is only 192 square feet. So I'm a little confused there, because you referred to it as a tent, but the picture looks like it's an enclosure, you know, as a shed.
It's in fact a tent.
Okay, what it is, is that that building, that or structure that's located to the westerly side of the garage is actually a tent, okay?
It doesn't look like it, and they referred to it as the shed on the assessors' record. Quite frankly, I haven't been up there-
Okay, the shed on the assessors' record is actually, apparently what they're calling is the garage.
No, the framed garage listed as well.
There isn't something that's existing there. The only thing that exists on the site right now is the garage that's there and the tents that's there.
Well, as I said, you referred to it as a tent, but I don't understand, because the assessors' record shows it as a framed shed.
I don't, maybe the assessors do that, but it's erroneous. The fact of the matter is, it's a tent.
Right.
All right, I think you should get it verified, Mr. Jalbert. I also have-
So, Marge-
Sarah?
Marge, this is Gene. So I have a copy of the property card here, and they have the framed shed. That is that brown building? If you look at the picture on the property card-
That's what I'm looking at.
Yeah, so it says framed shed, but they're actually calling the garage, I think, oh no, yeah, down here they have-
You also find the downing, then they have garage.
They have garage at 480 gross square feet down there.
But what they, that's the area of 192.
Right, but there's, in that picture, there's a green thing there? That's actually a tent.
That's what I see there, huh?
Yeah, that's, there's a tent there.
All right.
But I see what you're saying, they should go to the assessors and get this property card straightened out.
Absolutely, get it clarified, because it may be affecting their taxes as well.
Right.
And-
The fact of the matter is, the 192 square feet that you're talking about is in fact the tent, okay? The garage itself is 288 square feet.
Well, no, I understand what you're saying, Mr. Jalbert, it's just conflicting on, that's not what the assessors' record's showing.
I can't help that. We're out in the field in the existing conditions of as depicted on this plan. We're not derogating or trying to deceive anyone. What you see is what you act, is there.
No, I'm not questioning the viability of what you're saying, Mr. Jalbert, I'm merely saying that the assessors' record has to be cleared up then.
That could be true.
That's not going to do with you. I take you at what you say.
Okay.
Absolutely. Now, also, there were supposed to be four trees that were to be removed. Were they removed?
No, no, they haven't been removed. However, it was, we had a public hearing with the conservation commission a week ago, and they approved the trees' removal and the construction of the site as depicted.
Okay, because I don't think we have that in our record. Thank you.
Okay.
I'll move aside.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Have you, yeah, this is Tom. Have you received any correspondence from the neighbor at 110 South Shore Drive? I think it's 110. The one closest to the garage?
No, we have no public comment. I will check the phone line after the board asks questions to see if there's anybody on the call.
May I have another question? Is anybody else? I'm sorry, I might jump in.
Go ahead, Marge. I think it's fine, Marge, go ahead.
All right. On the border health, it says something about, did they go, they need a permit to move the septic tank? Was that? I don't see anything else on it.
No, let's make one thing clear. What happened is that purportedly the tank is located in that position. We have not excavated the tank, okay? When we're going to construct the garage, in any event we do end up with an obstruction of the tank relative to the garage itself, we would have to relocate the tank. And in the event that we have to relocate it, we'd have to go before the border health to get a permit to relocate the tank. But we don't know that until we actually do the construction.
Thank you.
I have one more question. This is Tom. Lenny, was that given to moving the garage a little closer to the road and avoiding the tank, and then it looks as though you might give more room on that side access or side measurement? See what I mean about, if there seems to be-
Yeah, we could act, we could do that, but what would happen if we moved the garage in an easterly direction? Assuming the tank is where it is, we'd have to move the garage five foot forward, which would actually put the point of the garage roughly 26 feet from the road rather than the 31 feet. So we would have to go for a double variance, is one on the side and one on the front. And I feel this way, here, we were just going for one variance rather than two.
Okay, thank you.
Diane or Fidelis, do you have any question?
No, I'm all set.
No questions.
Okay, Michael, Bill has not arrived on the meeting, so I think you have, everybody has asked their questions. Do you have questions before I check the public call-in line?
No, I'm fine with the project.
Okay, let us just check the call-in line. Is there any comment from the public regarding the public hearing for a special permit for 108 South Shore Drive? Nope. We have no one on the line, and we checked the public comment email. We've received no email either. So you're all set.
Okay. Okay, then I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion to-
I'm sorry, I was just going to say the motion was made by Diane Pasco, seconded by Marge Cooney.
Okay, that's fine. We want to do a roll call on all in favor. Start with Tom.
Yes.
Okay, Diane?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Okay, and I also vote yes on closing the public hearing. Would somebody like to make a motion on the approval project?
Well, first, we have to do the finding.
Okay, let's do that.
Okay. I make a motion to find that the proposal by Howard and Michelle Sir to allow the construction of a 24-foot by 26-feet single-story garage to the home resulting in a new right-side setback, nonconformity will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing nonconformity setback, because the other, because the other lot sizes in the vicinity of the property are all relatively small and have accessory structures, including garage and shed.
I'll second the motion. I'll second the motion.
Okay. We'll do the roll call again on that. Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
And I also vote yes. Anything else we need to interject here, Gene?
You need to have a motion to approve the special permit.
Okay. Somebody want to make that motion?
Go ahead, Marge. I make a motion to grant a special permit requested is outlined in the application and documentation provided as shown on plan titled Proposed Site Plan Prepared for Howard and Michelle Sir, 108 South Shore Drive, prepared by Lenny Jalbert, 54 Main Street, Sturbridge, dated 3/19/20, Plan Number 20033, Revision Number 2, dated 7/1/20. If approved, all necessary permits shall be obtained and filed prior to any instructions. For the information of anybody that might be watching, there is a 20-day appeal period from the date of filing, with Charles.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. The roll call again, Tom, how do you vote?
Yes.
Marge, how do you vote?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Tom, did I ask you?
Diane, yes.
Diane. Did I get everybody?
No, you, Mike, you.
Oh, me, I forgot me. That's figures. I forgot, yeah. The motion passes.
All right.
Isaiah. Okay, thank you very much for this, and have a good evening.
You too, Lenny.
Good evening, Lenny.
Okay, and it looks like Alfred Trafon is on the meeting. Fred, are you on?
I am here.
Okay. So, Michael, would you like me to read the public hearing notice for your next public hearing?
Yeah, please.
Okay.
Please, Marge, please, Gene.
In accordance with the provisions of Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, Section 11, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the center office building located at 301 Main Street on Wednesday, July 15, 2020, at 6:50 PM on the application of Lisa Carter and Alfred Trafon. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.05, and Chapter 24, Section 24.09, sub-paragraphs A through E of the zoning bylaw, to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing nonconforming structure or use for the property located at 103 Shore Road. The applicant is proposing to construct a 5-foot by 11-foot 5-inch deck to the home, which will result in an increase in percent of lot coverage. The zoning board may elect, consistent with the Governor Baker's March 12, 2020, order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, to hold the public hearing virtually, in which case the details respecting the same will be made public by the zoning board of appeals in advance of the hearing and will be posted here. HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash town hyphen administrator slash pages slash how hyphen access hyphen virtual hyphen meeting. For those unable to participate virtually, written comments will be accepted in advance of the public hearing. The proposed request can be viewed at HTTPS colon slash slash WWW dot Sturbridge dot gov slash zoning hyphen board hyphen appeals slash pages slash recent hyphen filings. Or arrangements can be made to view the application and plan by contacting the Sturbridge Planning Department at 508-347-2508, or by email at J Lacy at Sturbridge dot gov. Elizabeth Banks, Chair, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals. And Fred, your plan is up on the screen for you to explain.
The site plan you're looking at in front of you is the existing site plan with the proposed deck shown on the east and east side of the house towards the water. It's five and a half by 11 and a half. Setback to that deck to the sideline will be 5.1. The current chimney is 3.6, so there's no increase to sideline there. Distance to the water is 29.7. We have a town sewer. The little S to the east side of the straw waddles is a sewer line, and the sewer line runs up the current driveway and connects to the street. There'll be no stairs coming down from the deck. It's going to be on helical piles, so it's going to be approximately nine feet high. And I guess that's it.
Any comments and questions from the board?
Somebody else want to jump in ahead?
Go ahead, Marge.
Go ahead.
Okay. With the, you have a DEP permit that will expire in October 2020. Doesn't appear there's any concerns, but doesn't that indicate you would have to have the project completed by then? I'm not familiar too much with-
Yeah, I could go for an extension with the town.
You anticipate doing that?
No, I anticipate doing the deck right away.
I'm sorry, Mr. Phone, I-
I anticipate doing the deck right away.
Oh, you are?
Yeah.
Okay, so, that's, all right. And that's going to be on helical piles?
Yes.
All right. I think that was, now, there was a concern with DEW, the only concern they had was the E1 pump and sewer line under the existing deck. Can you tell me what you propose here?
Yeah, I just addressed that. The sewer line, we have a E1 pump, it's the little, on the side of the straw waddles, and the sewer line runs up the driveway. It's not in the vicinity of the deck.
I have somebody cutting my lawn, and it's kind of hard hearing you up there, they're right under my window now.
Okay, yeah, the sewer line runs underneath the driveway. It's nowhere in the vicinity of the deck.
All right, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I, if you don't believe I have any other questions, thank you.
Anybody else?
I'm all set.
I'm all set.
No questions.
Thanks, I thank Mr. Phone for the photographs provided of the houses in that close proximity there.
Gene, you need to check the public comments line before we do-
Yes, we'll check that right now. Is there any public who would like to comment on the public hearing, special permit for 103 Shore Drive, or Shore Road, sorry? for one oh three Shore Drive, or Shore Road, sorry?
There's nobody on the line and there is, there are no public comment emails either.
Somebody want to make a motion to close the public hearing?
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second, I'll second it.
Okay, we'll go through the list on that. Motion made and seconded. Um, Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
Okay, and I also vote yes on closing the public hearing. Somebody want to do the finding?
Hi, okay, I'll make it. I make a motion to find that the proposal by Lisa Carter and Alfred Truffon to allow the construction of a five-foot by eleven point five-foot deck to the home resulting in an increase in the percentage of lot coverage will not be more detrimental to the neighborhood because the lot sizes in the vicinity of this property are all relatively small and most contain single-family homes, some with accessory structures and most with decks and off tortures.
Second.
Okay, motion made and seconded. Uh, Tom? In favor?
Yes, please, yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
And Marge?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
I'll call up Mr. Truffon.
Thank you very much.
We have to make a motion to grant.
Do you want to make it?
I make a, I'll do it, I'll do it. I make a motion to grant a special permit pursuant to Chapter twenty, Section twenty point zero five, and Chapter twenty-four, Section twenty-four point zero nine, A through E, to the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter a pre-existing non-conforming structures or uses for the property, um, located at one oh three Shore Drive, for the construction of a five-foot by eleven point five-foot deck to the house, which will result in an increase in the percent, in the percentage of lot coverage, as shown on the plan entitled Proposed Site Plan Drawn for Alfred Truffon and Lisa Carter located at one oh three Shore Road, prepared by Truffon Design Associates, plan date seven five, two thousand and seventeen, D W G number two eight seven dash zero six four, revision A dated nine twenty-six seventeen.
Seconded.
May I make a comment?
Go ahead, Marge, go ahead.
I'm a little concerned about that DEP concern, so could we, I'll ask Ms. Buban, could we, uh, condition it that, uh, the permit, the DEP file number three hundred dash nine 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 expires October, two thousand, extension would be required if the project is not completed by the expiration date of the DEP? I asked Ms. Buban about whether she thinks that's necessary.
I don't, you can add it if you want, I don't think it hurts, but I don't think it's necessary because that date is on the conservation permit.
All right, I'll delete it, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll...
Okay, we have a motion on that special permit, can we have a second?
I'll second it as stated by Mr. Trappso.
Okay, go through the roll call on the vote. Uh, okay, Tom?
Yes.
Okay, Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And I also vote yes.
Okay.
Okay.
Enjoy your deck, Mr. Truffon.
No, thanks, I will. Thank you all. Have a good night.
Good evening.
Good night.
Okay, do we have any old or new business for discussion this evening?
No.
I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
I make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second it. Okay. All in favor? Tom?
Yes.
Diane?
Yes.
Fidelis?
Yes.
Marge?
Yes.
And I also vote yes on adjournment. Thank you very much. Uh, and Diane, you were Johnny on the spot tonight with the motions, Diane, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome. You're welcome.